All right, the time is 7:00 PM. There are six members of council present. A quorum is established. I call this meeting to order. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our public recognition of employees. We have two employees who are choosing to retire on us unfortunately. We are so proud of the men and women who worked for the city of Mount Sterling. And it is our belief that we need to send them out on the right note and recognizing their service publicly. So tonight, we have Robbie Miles from the Mount Sterling Police Department, who is choosing to retire on me after a many long conversation. And certainly, that's okay, because that's what you work for in life and that's what you hope that after all these years you put in of service that you have the opportunity to set aside on your terms and go do what you wish to do. And I know you have a new career that you were looking forward to and we're looking forward to seeing you shine in that new career. And if we want to buy a house, we'll know who goes first. Robbie, if you'll come up. And Chief, if you'd like to come up too. Robbie, love years for the city of Mount Sterling. I remember him when I first became mayor, took over my duties. I sat down with every officer and had good long discussions with them about the not serving PD and wanted their feedback on what we could do to improve our department. And certainly Robbie, you gave me a lot of valuable advice and a lot of valuable counsel. Robbie, when I started, I don't think you had seen daylight. You worked nights for how long now?
Still there.
Still there. Yeah, too bad we couldn't have worked that day before you left. You gave me a lot of valuable insight as to your all's compensation and benefits. And we've certainly tried as a city to correct that and to make sure that we are appropriately recognizing you all for all the wonderful work that you did. So I thank you for that. We want to present to you tonight officially your certificate of appreciation and a key to the city. So tonight, awarded to Robbie Miles, a certificate of appreciation for 17-plus years of honorable and faithful service to the city and to the citizens of our community. You are truly one of Mount Sterling's finest. Thank you for your service, September 9th, 2007 to July 31st, which is your last official day with the city, 2025. Thank you so much for your service. And Chief, you want to say a few words?
I'm gonna go back part-time. I'm losing my mind a little bit. What, you can get your day shift on? Yeah, Robbie's got a great inspiration. He was a leader on the afternoon shift. He's on the job at Charlie's. Actually, second in. He does a good job. You're gonna miss it. Wish I could work that day shift for you. It's much, we would do.
Absolutely. So, what floor is yours?
Well, I would like to say that I'm truly honored and blessed to be able to stand up here. And many people that actually start in this career don't finish, ended up with their 20 years or plus. Things happen in life, life happens. I've been really blessed and fortunate to actually make it to the end of my career. I'm also blessed for being able to serve the citizens of McBurnham County and Mount Sterling for 21 years. You all have been great and I've given you all my everything. You all have given me everything. And I couldn't actually do this without my family and my friends and lots of prayers. So I ask that just continue to remember all the offers and prayer because things are getting tough out there. It's getting tougher by the day. And I truly want to thank everybody to say I'm truly blessed for this career and being able to make it through to the end.
We are truly blessed for your service, your leadership, and your mentorship. Thank you so much for that. You want to recognize some of your family that's here and then I want you to get a picture of that also.
Okay. Yeah, first I have my wife, Debbie. I have one of my daughters, Molly. Kathy, this is my oldest daughter, sitting right here. This is her boyfriend, Max. Max sat on the far right up here. This is my mother, Dorothy Miles. There in the back, as you can see, there's Little Taylor back there. That's my dad, Don Miles. And my sister in the gray shirt there, Debbie, and her granddaughter, Taylor.
Right. Well, thank you all so much as a family for standing behind him. And it's so important for our men and women in uniform to know that they have a solid family behind them that's supporting them every single day. So you all have sacrificed also to allow him to serve this city and this fine community. So thank you very much. And would you please come up and I want you to get a picture with your family. All right. Give me a second picture. All right. On three. One, two, and three. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, we've got one more employee to recognize tonight. So Morgan Rowland has been a member of our Public Works Department for many years. If you have seen the individuals that are out on the streets early in the morning who are watering flowers, painting curbs, cleaning up trash and debris in the community, fixing sidewalks, doing mowing yards, I mean, they do it all here. And Morgan has been a solid member of this team for quite some time. I know Nathan Boston is gonna miss him. He's talked to me a lot about the contributions that Morgan has made. And through our discussions, we think that we're gonna have to hire two people to replace all the work that Morgan does. So Morgan, if you can come up tonight to Nathan, you'll come up also. Can you get a picture?
No.
Morgan, tonight, I have the city of Mount Sterling want to present to you a certificate of appreciation and a key to the city, awarded to Morgan Rowland, an appreciation for 15-plus years of honorable and faithful service to the city and to the citizens of our community. You're truly one of Mount Sterling's finest. Thank you for your service, July 19th, 2010 to July 31st, 2025. Thanks, Morgan. Nathan, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'm happy. I was counting it up today. I'm counting it most. From 62 years old.
I'm sure. I've worked at this guy 30 years. So he's been beside me and moved this.
I told you you wouldn't have to make speeches, but you're gonna have to.
I like working with every one of these guys, including the principal, Shane, and Tim, and all of them has taught me a lot of stuff. Thank Robert Barnes for having me this morning and everybody that helped us do what we do. Thank you.
I hear you know how much you meant to this city. And when we talk about how beautiful this city is, it's a beautiful historic city and how good it looks, it's because of your efforts, it's because of public works and what you guys do every single day. All the accolades we get, you know, we set up here, we pass ordinances, we prepare budgets and so forth, you guys are the ones out there making it happen. I just want to sincerely thank you for your dedication to this city. Being a guy who's always the first one in.
Yeah, we started at 6:30, you there at quarter at 5:00.
He's always the first one in. And always willing to jump in and do whatever is necessary. So I know that it was a tough decision for you to decide to retire. We support you 100%. That's what you work so hard for, is so you can go retire one day and live out your dreams. And if you get bored in retirement, you know where you can come looking back for a little part-time work. We've got First Fridays, we've got Monday. Thank you, Morgan. All right, thank you all for your patience. Item number four is the approval of the June 17th, 2025 council meeting minutes. Those are in your packets. I know you've had an opportunity to look those over. I'll just need a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Barnes, second by King. Any discussion? Public members, please.
Barnes, help. I.
King.
I.
Leffler.
I.
Murphy.
I.
Thank you. Item number five is June financial reports. Those are in your packet. You've had an opportunity to look those over. If you have any questions or comments, please bring those forward. Next on the agenda, item number six, Walker Construction LLC. Hayden Chisholm is here this evening to speak to us as the project manager for the TAP-3 Downtown Revitalization Project update. So Hayden, welcome. And Art Walker, welcome tonight. Good to have you.
Yes, my name is Hayden Chisholm and I'm Robert representative of Walker Construction. I'll be serving as the project manager of the Main Street and Mayville Street for the Blade and Construction Project. So before I get into anything about this project, does everyone have a construction map and a project set?
So you should have this on your desk. And Laura, can you make sure any members of the public who are interested that need that, did a copy? All right, Hayden, we're ready when you are.
Okay. So we're just gonna go over some basic information about the project, like where it's at, how long the project will take place, what the final product of the project will look like after we're done, and then we'll walk through some of the construction phases, A to Z on that map. So this project is taking place on Main Street. It will begin at the Main Street and Main Street intersection and go until just past the Wilson Street intersection at Main Street at the entrance just between the Gateway Arts Center and Hall Funeral Homes. The project has already started this week. If you've driven through Main Street, you've probably seen that. It started on Monday and it is expected to last until December 19th. So what we are doing while we're there, we will be replacing the existing sidewalks with a brand-new concrete that will be in compliance with ADA standards. There will be a two-foot runner along the curb that is a stencil-dyeed concrete and this will emulate the look and feel of concrete. It'll look very similar to what you see on Mayville Street right now, on South Mayville Street. There will be curb extensions at specific locations designated by the design engineer. These curb extensions will serve as, the purpose of them was to decrease the walkway for the pedestrian and also it will allow, you'll be able to put landscaping there such as plants, bushes, anything. After we complete the sidewalks, we will repave the roads. And there will also be eight-inch concrete entrances at State Farm, at McCormick Land and Locking Company, and at the entrance at Hall Funeral Homes. So now I'm just gonna walk through how we're gonna go about building it and kind of use that map that you have and the schedule in front of you. So we're gonna start on the north side of Main Street. Our starting point for where we will begin construction will be that entrance in between Hall Funeral Homes and Gateway Regional Arts Center. We will begin saw cutting there, tearing out concrete, replacing that concrete with new six-inch concrete, just replacing the existing for the first phase. We will not be working on the curb extensions until later on. I'll get to that in just a moment. During this first phase, we have to shift traffic to one lane in each direction toward the south bottom part of the street. We will be able to keep parking open on the south side, but the lanes will just be reduced from 12-foot to 10-foot. And the left turn and right turn lanes at the Main Street and Mayville Street intersection will be removed, just for that duration of the phase. After we replace the existing sidewalk in phase one, we will move to phase two where we will pretty much do the same thing, just on the south side. We're gonna move traffic to 10-foot lanes to the north part of the road. We're gonna keep parallel parking open on the north side of the road. We're gonna close parking on the south side. And yeah, pretty much just the same thing as phase one, just on the south side of Main Street. After we finish replacing the existing sidewalks, we will then go back and build the curb extensions that we talked about a moment ago. We won't be able, or we won't have to reduce traffic to two lanes in each, or to two 10-foot lanes for that phase. We will just be able to flag traffic as we pour new concrete. After we build those curb extensions, we will be able to pave the road from the starting point at Main Street to the entrance besides Hall Funeral Homes. We are just paving Main Street during that phase. After that phase of construction, we're gonna repeat the same process on Mayville Street now. We're gonna work on building the west existing, tearing out the existing concrete on the west side of Mayville Street, replacing it with new concrete, new curb extensions. And, oh, I'm sorry, I completely forgot to mention this earlier. We are also, as part of the final product, we are updating all the pedestrian buttons as well and all the pedestrian signs and the detectable warnings, those little coffee mats you see on the street, those will be updated as well. Sorry, didn't mean to go off my tangent there. So that'll all be part of the phase for the west side of Mayville Street. We will then jump over to the east side of Mayville Street and replace all the curb, or all the curb, all the concrete in here. And yeah, that'll be about it for those, till that phase, and then we'll be able to pave, repave Main Street, or Mayville Street, and that'll wrap things up. I think that's about it that I'll have. If anyone has any questions, please go for your ass now.
Questions from council?
We did pull the sidewalks out over by the courthouse, didn't we?
We did. Yes. So that section came out with the rebid.
So what's gonna be done at McCormick and State Farm until, you said something about...
Sorry.
Something's gonna be done at the McCormick, uh, not McCormick, will, uh, auction. Yeah, and State Farm.
Oh, yes. We're putting in new concrete entrances. So now it's just pavement, entrances meeting pavement on the road. We'll put concrete there to tie the sidewalk on each side.
Hayden, we've talked about the schedule, so the schedule is set. We've built in time for our festivals, so court day will not be impacted, our First Fridays, our Small Town America. We still plan on having all those events. We'll just have to work around those. Obviously, weather plays a huge issue into any projects, but if it's been dry the way it has been, then we ought to be able to get a lot of work done and stay on schedule. Your days of the week that you plan to work?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. We have discussed and they're well aware that Mondays are our lighter day along Main Street, so we'll try to get as much done as they can on those dates. Hayden has been around with me to every business on Main Street to have a discussion and to let them know what's coming. If they weren't in, we left materials. I know some of those are here tonight. So we know the importance of communication and I know that you all went out, you know, today with what was going on and we appreciate that, just being as proactive with our communication as you can be. So thank you for that. As we move and get closer to North Mayville Street, we'll make those visits and speak to the business owners and property owners there. Curb extensions for council, if you all, I know you've been down to look at the sidewalks and so forth, but if you've seen the orange spray paint, that's the curb extensions that they're speaking about. We've had some discussions about the curb extensions, possibly bringing those in just a bit. This is a huge change for drivers to see curbs where curbs were not there before. So I think we've got a, we've come to a good in-between, you know, a good point that we can agree that the curbs may fit best. So there may be some small changes as any project, you're gonna have to adjust, but they're prepared to do that, so we appreciate you all looking at those things for us. What else have we forgot, Hayden?
I think we got it all.
Think we got it all?
We're gonna be out of there by quarter day.
And then ready to pick right up after, so, okay.
It's gonna be messy, it's gonna be a process, but we're gonna get in and out of there soon as quickly as we can.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate Walker Construction, it's full of a bunch of our local citizens. So these are folks we went to school with and go to church with and our kids play ball together and so forth and, you know, these folks are gonna take a lot of pride in making sure that this project is done right, so we appreciate that. I'd like to open it up from, to the public, if there's any citizen here, any property owner here, any business owner here that has a question that they'd like to ask, we can go ahead and open that up. Yes?
So we're gonna be in the phase five, or phase one of this time. And my question is, will we have access to our front door for our customers at all times, or will that be an issue at some point?
Yes, sir. At any time that we have an off-road out or possibly any slightly wet concrete, we will be able to build your ramp that extends from the street to your doorway, that ain't the wall. It'll be wide enough that no one, there's no chance that an off-road will be able to go out of access here.
That's a good question. I'm glad that was asked, so didn't talk about that before. No business owner, once their sidewalk is tore out, will not have access to their front door. They'll build a temporary sidewalk to get in, so, good question there. Yes?
Is parking on Main Street gonna be closed on both sides through both phases, or is the south side gonna be parking, like you open while you're on the north side?
Yes. Yes, sir. It'll, one side will always be open. If we're working on the north side, the south side will be open. If we're working on the south side, the north side will be open. And I think Al mentioned that any parking in city limits, you're not gonna tow during that time.
We're gonna be extremely generous with our parking to just try to, we're all in this together, so we all want to make sure that, you know, we're being courteous and just trying to help each other out.
Loading zones will be kept free there?
Yes, a loading zone, of course, yeah. We'll make sure, and George, I'm glad you said that, we have stressed to the business owners, if you have a special delivery, you've got something going on, you let the guys know out there a day or two in advance and we'll do whatever we can to adjust to make sure that you're able to get a delivery or hold a special event or whatever it is.
Is there gonna be a point person out there for us to speak to when we get deliveries there? So, is there not gonna be an easy to identify point person?
Oh, yeah, you can always talk to any of the guys working there. Easy to work with, I mean, just grabbing them. If they're not the best guy, I'll tell them whoever is that on the project, so, yeah, they're very easy to work with and easy to talk to.
Hayden, one other thing that was not brought up, can you just explain when we take out a sidewalk, what that looks like, how big a sections are you envisioning doing at a time?
Sure. So our demo guys, we had a demo crew that will be working in front of the concrete crew who, so the demo crew will be tearing out a half block to a block of concrete at a time. Then the concrete crew will come in behind them and pour over anything they just tore out. The demo crew will tear out only as much as they need to pour for that section, so it varies from section, from sidewalk to sidewalk. Some places it's four inches, some it's six inches, some it's eight inches, but basically there's gonna be four inches of crushed rock underneath six inches of concrete sidewalk. So 10 inches deep from the side of the curb to the edge of the wall along the business. They'll tear that out. Concrete guys will come in behind them, pour fresh batch, and move on from there.
Go on.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, you're fine.
They don't really work in flux with each other. They'll, you know, they're not gonna get too far ahead, too far behind each other just because we don't want our demo guys to work way ahead on the road and have an open section sidewalk for a long period of time before our concrete guys can get to them, so they'll kind of just be trying to stay as close to each other as possible.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions from anyone on council, anything from any member of the public? Okay, Hayden, we've talked about it, proactive communication, we'll do that, and I may ask you to come back next month to just give us an update as to where we're at.
Yes, sir.
All right. Look forward to a great project. Thank you. Okay, next we have Newsong Counseling, so Kathy Turner and Sheri Wells, welcome.
Thank you. We're so glad that you're here. This council is always a very welcoming, kind of generous company. We need coding issues and so we're thankful to be here today. Sheri has given you a document about our opioid abatement grant. We received the grant from the state and have the pledge of grant from the county and are still lacking some funds and are here to request some funds from the city opioid abatement. So let me just give you a little bit of updated information about Newsong and what's going on there. This year alone, we have served 235 fights from 17 different counties and municipalities. from 17 different counties and central counties in Kentucky. They range from four to 81, with 51% of them being children and adolescents. So we find ourselves having more clients than we have availability to see them. At all times, we have about 40 people on our waitlist. And so we're working to develop what we call a one-to-many approach, where we can help lots of people at one time. And that's where this, our plan for the opioid abatement funds comes in. We want to accomplish this two-way.